All this meeting to the board, please stand for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's August 11th, just a little after 10 o'clock. Move right into consent agenda. Melanie, you want to?
Approval of payroll July 24th and August 7th, 2020. Approval of claims July 16th, July 22nd, July 30th, and August 6th, 2020. Approval of minutes July 14th, 2020. Comp time report filed. Treasurers monthly report filed June 30th, 2020. Ways and measures report filed June 16th to July 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Throw that to the floor, the consent agenda. Open it up to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Going to move right into Commissioners' business here. Just an announcement, we're going to be accepting applications to the Porter County Airport Authority. The applicant must be a Democrat, so we're accepting applications now for that board position and will probably be, once we get the applications in, hopefully we will look to the next meeting to fill that vacancy. So next up on the agenda is NIPSCO. This is an easement for gas facilities at State Road 2 and County Road 50 West, Heavlin Road. I think this is an easement to NIPSCO for, is this part of the roundabout at Heavlin, I would imagine so?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So for the board, that is where they're doing the roundabout. This is some easements that NIPSCO needs for gas relocations. I'll throw that to the floor for approval. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second for NIPSCO, an easement, granting an easement for gas facilities at State Road 2 and County Road 50 West, which is Heavlin Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Next up Pulse Technology. This is an annual equipment maintenance agreement in the amount of $1,060 for the mail machine and scale at the Valpo Courthouse. Any comments or questions? Throw it to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Pulse Technology for annual equipment maintenance agreement in the amount of $1,060 for mail machine and scale at the Valpo Courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an update as we've been going through COVID since the first of the year. I think most of you, some of you may know, may not know, that the county about two years ago embarked on a path to update the county's website. That was, took us about 10 months and we got it up and running prior to COVID, right around the first of the year. If you also remember when we approved the website, we also approved the data analytics package on the website. Through COVID, we've seen some of the numbers and we thought they were very interesting. So we thought we would share with the public today what comes out of the data analytics and how the website's working for us so far. With that, I'll turn it over to our website guru, Kurt Dallas. Kurt, you have the floor. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I just want to give you a kind of upper level view of what has happened primarily during what I'm calling the COVID period, which is right around March 5th is when we started posting information on our website regarding COVID. In April, the 6th of April, we launched our COVID dashboard, which has turned out to be, you'll see in these numbers quite, the public is watching very closely and very appreciative of what we're doing. So for the period of 3-5-20 to 8-4-20, we've had a total number of visits of 895,434. That's looking at an average, pardon me, mobile device visits, 76%, and the desktop device visits was 25%, which is pretty much in line with what is across the industry. Now, here's where we break down to the interesting stuff, the page views for the same period of time. The number of visits to our COVID dashboard pages was 895,116, page views, I'm sorry. The other COVID-related pages where we're posting information from the Health Department about local guidelines, links to the state, links to the CDC, et cetera, we've had 155,077 visits. And our non-COVID-related pages, the normal business pages that we have there, was 674,101. Now, on the dashboard pages, we launched on 4-6 and the average daily views is about 7,400 visits a day, or views a day. On the other COVID-related pages, we're talking about roughly 1,200 visits or page views a day. And on our, on our non-COVID pages, the average daily views are about 5,400 a day. So not only are we getting COVID people, but we're getting people really using our website now for regular county business. Our total page views for this period of time was 1.7 million page views. I did do a quick breakdown by city. Top five, top six cities, unknown came in number one, and I'll explain that in a minute. For Valpo, we had 187,000 or 21%. Chicago, 135,000, 15.1%. Chesterton, 61-plus thousand at 6.9%. And Portage at 41,000, 4.6%. Hebron, 20,000 at 2.3%. Now, they identify the visits by IP address. So if, for example, if I log on from my county computer, my IP address is showing that I'm in Valpo. If I log in from my home computer, it's showing that I'm in Chesterton. If I log in from my mobile device using Verizon, it shows that I'm in Chicago. So it's very reasonable to assume that the unknowns, a large, a significant portion of the unknowns and the Chicago category listed here are actually Porter County residents. But I broke them out this way just to give you a better idea. Now, here's, here's the part that kind of stunned me even. If we compare to the same period of time in 2019, in 2019, from March 5th through August 4th, we had 207,000 visits, total visits. In 2020, we had 895,000. It's just a 331% increase in the number of visits to our website. Now, just, just as a side, in 2019, 40% of those visits were return visits, people who come back several times, and 60% were unique visitors. In 2020, that percentage has flipped, where now 59% of our visits are return visitors and 40% are unique visitors. Mobile visits, we compared that in 2019, we had 93,000 mobile visits. In 2020, we had over 680,000, a 628% increase. That is primarily due to, number one, the increase because of COVID, but number two, we have a mobile-friendly site, which we did not have before.
Yep.
Our desktop visits in 2019, 114,000. In 2020, 214,000. Now, that's because we have more people visiting the site. It's not because there's a shift in the number of, of mobile views versus desktop views. So we're able, able to double our desktop views during that period of time. The one part that I wanted to highlight, yonder page views here, the 2019 number that I put in there are only non-COVID-related pages, our normal business pages. So in 2019, we had 345,000 page views of our normal business pages. In 2020, we had a 674,000, which is a 95% increase. Again, even though these are people visiting our regular pages, I think a good number of that increase are because of our shutdown. We were able to really pretty quickly shift on our website to give people information on how to access county services while we were closed. What I did was actually set up a set of pages in there with accessing county services during closure. I've kind of modified that now to be how to access county services if you don't want to come and visit us. So we're still seeing a good number of people going through that portal to find out how they can pay their taxes without coming in, how they can get the deductions information, how they can sign up to be a poll worker, how they can view election equipment, how they can request absentee ballot applications, all of that. All of those numbers and that capability will be there, and I'm looking at ways to further integrate, to help people find ways that they can do business with us without having to come into our building, even post-COVID, if we ever get there, kind of thing. So overall, number one, probably to me, the redesign of the county website, our timing on that was perfect. We probably would have been in pretty big trouble right now had we not done that because, number one, obviously, nobody could really find much of anything on their phones from, on the previous design. And I think that the public has been, I think a lot of the people also who have gone in to visit our dashboard are taking the time to look at other parts of our website. The average number of visitors who visit our website, about 40 to 45% of those are visiting multiple pages. So it's telling me that COVID is attracting people to our website, but they're also exploring other ways to find ways to do business with us. So that's it in a kind of a nutshell?
Kurt, on the, on GIS, when we get on GIS on the website, it pushes us off onto another server, I believe, from a remote. Are those numbers including GIS? Because I know we've been putting a lot of horsepower in GIS with regards to data.
Here, here, let me, hold on, let me switch here and let me show you real quick what we're doing there. This is our dashboard page, the dashboard page for websites. This segment right here is actually the GIS system.
Right.
We've just imported that to our website so we don't have to link them off to go off to another link and another click, kind of thing.
So you've contained it on the COVID side?
Correct. We've put a container in here that just pulls the information directly from the GIS site. So Chuck is actually updating GIS. We have just imported that information into our website, so it's easier for people to view. The other part that we do ourselves here is our graphs and charts, which again has had, the number of people visiting that has grown, I think, I think if I remember right, since we started launching the charts and graphs page, over 50,000 page views on that page alone. But we do breakdown of total cases, the positivity rate, daily positivity rate, seven-day average, the total positivity by day, breakdown of new cases by month in the age 19 and under category. We launched this one about three or four weeks ago to give schools and parents an idea of what's going on in that younger age category. New cases with the seven-day rolling average, reported tests by day with seven-day rolling averages, new cases by week, these we only update once a week, new cases by week excluding congregate living facilities. This was when, we started this back when we started to have a big uptick in long-term care facilities and the ones at the jail. We wanted to provide people information versus what are, what are the numbers in those congregate living facilities versus what are the numbers in the community spread? And then we go down and provide historical data, total new cases, or new and total cases by day and new and total tests by day. So these have been proven very helpful to people because not only are we showing a daily snapshot, but we're showing trends over time.
Thank you, Kurt. I think the foresight into moving to a mobile-friendly website, I think, has pretty much proved that, that's where it's going, at a 628% increase year over year. And we're going to be looking to continue to enhance mobile for our citizens as much as possible because it's becoming the norm in today's world. So, good, thank you, Kurt, for all your work on that and.
The other item here, Commissioners, is, is part of, I think, what we've experienced because of the influx of new visitors to our website, is we've hit what was our contractual limit on the number of people that can sign up to get text messages for emergency alerts, agendas, calendars, et cetera. And in order for us to continue to let that grow, we have to purchase another block of what they call SMS slots.
Yes.
The last time we did this was in February of 2019, and we're turning around having to do it again now. I think as of yesterday, we had over 8,000 people who had signed up for text alerts for all of the different categories. So what they've given us is a memorandum to purchase another block of 500 slots. They prouaded this year, so it would be $282.85 for the remainder of this contract year and then $945, $945 a year every year after that.
I'll make a motion to approve that. I use that text service and it's right on it, get information quickly. I recommend everybody signs up.
Second. We have a motion in second to increase our MSS capacity on our county website. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Kurt. Next up, number five, five and six are, we're really going to be acting on, I believe, six, correct? Attorney McFlair, why don't you?
Number five was the original health access agreement for the clinic with Franciscan. Number six is the First Amendment to that program. We are, as we've changed our agent on this, we are removing from the original contract the manner in which the previous consultant was paid. So the amendment is just taking out one of the paragraphs on the payment procedure through the contract, and that would be to remove that, that additional payment.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for an amendment to the healthcare access program from Franciscan Alliance, GDA, working well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Next up is Lamar Outdoor. They're wanting to, instead of paying the county a one-time annual fee, they want to pay us monthly instead. I'm sure that has to do with COVID and cash flow and everything else, so putting that adjustment to the lease in front of this board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Lamar Lease to pay monthly instead of annually. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Okay, we're going to skip around a little bit. I'm going to move down to the development, stormwater management portion. We're going to, we've received bids today to mow an overlay, 475 West from US 30 to 300 North, and then North Calumet from US 6 to Chesterton Town Limits. And then we have a full depth reclamation of 250 West from US 30 to Joliet Road, 500 East from 1300 South, 1125 South. So we're going to open those quotes right now, bids right now. And then we'll, once we open them, we'll hand them off to Matt Gavelak, our county highway engineer, and they will review the quotes to make sure that they're responsible. And then hopefully by the end of the project, the end of the meeting, we can award if there's no snafus. Yeah, here they are, here. Should I, should I quote both or both? Okay, so this is Reece Riley Construction out of Gary, $749,475. Next bid is from Walsh &amp; Kelly out of Griffith, and they're 815-521-50, 815-521-50 cents. That's Walsh &amp; Kelly. And those are the only two we have. Thank you, Madam Auditor. Thank you, Matt. We'll visit with you later on in the meeting, see how you're coming along. Did we hit, so that's both of them, right? That was both of them, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, now we're going to move back up to the main, let's back up to North County Annex. We got payoffs here for the North County project. We're finishing that project out. We can do these 5-8 payoffs in one motion, so I'll throw it to the floor as noted on the agenda.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second for the North County payoffs, articles 1 through 5 on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to go to the Sheriff's Department, and we have an Office of Energy Environmental Development Grant Agreement in the amount of $35,000. Good morning, Edie.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Morning.
This, I believe, was a grant for the cars?
For the hybrids, yeah.
The electric car, Sheriff Cars, right? Anything you guys would want to add to this or?
No, they, they possibly may give us more. We're looking at maybe 70,000 more. So this is the first initial check.
From Clean Cities there?
Yeah. So they have to be purchased for hybrids.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're hoping for 70 because we have some accidents that could replace some cars.
So this is, we're approving a grant agreement in the amount of $35,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for the Office of Energy Environmental Development Grant Agreement in the amount of $35,000 for the Sheriff's Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
You guys are among the first, right, to be doing this?
Yeah, first in the state, yeah.
First in the state.
So hopefully we'll get a couple more of it.
Then we have another memorandum here to accept tangible property from the Department of Justice for official use. Do you know what this is about?
Yeah, it's a pickup that we seized, and it goes through the thing before they can give it away, and they offered it to us. We just have to pay a small percentage, won't cost that much, and it can go in our drug fleet.
Was that that 250, that F-250? Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a memorandum to accept tangible property from the Department of Justice for official use for the Sheriff's Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there.
Oh, yeah.
Next up, emergency management. This is Porter County Shoreline Disaster Emergency Declaration and Travel Restriction. As we point out, we do this every 30 days because this firm can only declare a disaster for 30 days at a time. So we're up here renewing for another 30 days. The Porter County Shoreline Disaster Emergency Declaration and Travel Restriction, I'll throw that to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Next up, we got Schneider Geospatial and Bob Thompson, come on forward. This is for the planning department, I believe, for permitting. Morning, Bob. So what do you got here?
To explain this briefly, we originally signed an agreement with 39 North to do the workforce, to do a GIS and online-type permitting format. 39 North has since gone on and bought out, so they're only going to be doing federal work on that. So they did research and they felt that Schneider Geospatial had the permitting software that we wanted. So Chuck Miller, myself, sat down and Scott popped in for a little bit on this, and we had a meeting with the folks at Geospatial. Both Chuck and I were impressed with it. We felt it was what we wanted. So the agreement was, is 39 North is going to be refunding us the money that we have given them, and then we were going to be putting this back in towards Schneider Geospatial. Schneider Geospatial is honoring the amount of the agreement that we had with 39 North, and that also includes the maintenance agreement for four years.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Schneider Geospatial. This is a professional service agreement that's replacing a previous service agreement where the vendor is not doing this type of work anymore, same price and same cost to the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. What do you got next, Bob? Level 2 Design Exception Memorandum, what do you got?
Correct. Utility poles along 100 South, they will not be able to push them all the way back into the clear zone requirement under N-DOT. They're going to be a little bit in on this, so we're going in asking for a level 2 Design Exception for some of the utility poles along 100 South. Basically, it's the same thing as, as if we were to go in front of a planning commission and ask for a waiver for development standards on that situation.
What, what's going to be the actual now, do you think, from what it's planned versus the, between 1 and 2? 10 feet?
Um, I, yes. It's, they're only in a couple of feet from where the actual amount is. Level 2 is not, I should say, level 1 is really the hard request. Level 2 is not that hard of a request. We've gone in and asked for level 2 on other projects that we've had. Matter of fact, Bridge 68 on Smoke Road, we've asked for a level 2.
Okay. But then, to give a little background, this is about where the tele, where the utility poles are now and as that is, as those intersections in the, in 100 Souths is improved, it's whether or not they're in the, so many feet of the road and so therefore in the clear path. And basically this, we're asking for a little bit of forgiveness on some of the poles so that we don't have the, well, they're either, A, very difficult to move where they're located, or B, very expensive to move.
Correct.
And so this is the underlying reason for the request.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. Any questions aboard?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a level 2 Design Exception Memorandum for utility poles in an obstruction-free zone for the project at County Road 100 South from Lenovo Drive to 1700 East, to 1700 feet east of County Road 500 West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. This looks familiar.
Yes. You heard this during the Stormwater Management Board meeting. We sat down and interviewed three firms. Amanda did that, and I also sat in on a couple of the interviews on this. The reason why you're seeing this here at the Commissioners is, I guess, I was intrigued by the presentation and how we could possibly use this also for highway engineering and also the planning commission in some aspects, so I'm bringing it in front of the Commissioners to pretty much make this an agreement across the whole department. We know the main focus was with Mike's effort with the MS4 program on that and getting out the word with the stormwater and what Amanda's going to be working on with MS4 and other projects. But I just thought, you know, this could also be a good tool for the planning commission, highway engineering, and the other sections that are within the department. commission, highway engineering, and the other sections that are within the department.
Okay. Take action for the board?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yep, we have a motion, a second, for an agreement between JCMA and the Porter County Department of Development Stormwater Management with a one-time discovery in social platform setup charge of $150 and $249 a month for ongoing social media services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-saying sign. Motion carries.
I do want to add, no matter who you've chosen to do this, if we don't get information to them regularly and timely, it's not going to go well.
True, and we understand that. And one of the very first things is, within the contract, is they're going to have a little sit-down charette with us to go over information.
And they're going to be inviting the four Stormwater Board members to that charrette. And so, because I told them, we wanted to be present at that. So we make sure this gets off to the right start that we want. So, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, well, thanks.
Okay, next up, we have a rezone, and this is P2, Parks 2 RR, Rural Residential, and the petitioner is Tara Ketchum. This is a first reading, so we will be opening up for public comment. We'll be giving three opportunities for someone to come forward to speak against this rezone, and then we will give three opportunities to come forward and talk in favor of this rezone. When you do come forward, we ask that you stand over here by the microphone. We would like your name and your address, and just make sure that we just want to be able to capture your comments and words on a public record. So that's usually how we do public hearings here. So with that, what we will do is allow the petitioner to make the case, and then we will open it up to the public hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm. So...
Could I step in real quick?
What's that?
Can I step in real quick?
You sure can. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Sorry, this is Plan Commission Resolution 20-02. The petitioner is Tara Ketchum. Their request is a zoning map amendment. They're requesting a P2 Parks and Recreational District, which is their existing ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, zoning district, and they're requesting a RR Rural Residential District. This was heard before the planning commission at their July 22 hearing date. It was a public hearing then, and it was forwarded up to the county commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
Where was the vote on that, Bob?
6-0.
Okay. Okay, so with that, you have the floor, and we'll let you allow to say your words, and then what we'll do is we'll close the, we'll suspend the commissioners' meeting, and we'll move into the public forum. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Katie Coff with Hepner, Wagner, and Evans. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Tara Ketchum. The property, subject property is located at 625 West Hebron, Indiana. It's a little under eight acres total. Ms. Ketchum purchased the property about a year ago with the intent of building a home for herself, and then as well as building another home for her parents. So this is our first step in accomplishing this goal, is asking for the rezone. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. What's on that property now? Nothing?
Nothing. Correct. It's vacant.
Vacant ground. Does anybody know what it was used for, since it was zoned park?
It was originally as part of the comprehensive rezone back in 2007. The, I believe, the individual that lived on the corner owned the property in question. At the time, the plan was for the Hebron Soccer Club.
Hebron Soccer Club has property that's basically surrounding us on the east and the south side of it, and they have their soccer fields over there now.
And so originally, the plan was the owner was, the plan was to sell this property to the soccer club. At this point in time, as we fast forward to 2020, the Hebron Soccer Club has exhausted their want for more property, or their ability for more property at this point. So, given that, the individual has sold this property, and the new owner is wanting to rezone it to be able to put a single-family home or home on the property, two of them. So that's the history of how we got here. The reason why it was zoned P2 originally was because the owner at that time had all the intention of selling it to the Hebron Soccer Club. So when the comprehensive rezone was done, it was zoned P2 at that particular owner's request.
Correct. Thank you. Motion to approve.
We have a public hearing.
Yes. Any other questions from the board before I move into the public hearing?
No.
Okay, with that. All right, so I've already outlined how this will hopefully go. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting. We're going to open up a public hearing. I'm just making sure everybody's awake, that's all.
He loves that gavel.
No, it's a little heavy-handed today. My arm hurts. It's heavy. So the first, what we are going to do is, anybody, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. And again, this is where you come, you give your name, your address, and say your piece. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Okay, we're now going to move, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this rezone? Hearing, no comments either way. I close the public hearing, and we're now reopening the board of commissioners' meeting. And any comments or questions from the board? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a rezone for petitioner Tara Ketchum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-saying sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be heard at the next commissioners' meeting.
Thank you.
It will be on the agenda automatically.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
We don't mistot at all.
I'll let him know.
Just saying. Okay, next up, I don't think John Whitner's here, but this is a request, an annual request to hold the annual Malvern Labor Day Parade on September 7, 2020. Porter County Sheriff's Department will be conducting traffic control for the entire route, which includes State Road 49, County Road 330 South, County Road 400 South, County Road 150 South, and County Road 325 East. So I'll put that to the board for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve with the comment that this is a very long, spread-out parade, and there will probably be very, I would be shocked if there were rows of people on top of each other watching it. This is the most COVID-safe parade I can imagine.
We need a parade. Second. Yeah, I can attest that running for office, it's the longest parade. I know that.
Don't walk it.
Because you walk it, and it's long. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of granting the Morgan Township Fire Department this event, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-saying sign. Motion carries. And next, we have a request to hold a rosary rally on the courthouse grounds at the northeast corner on October 10, 2022, from noon till 1:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor for holding a rosary rally on the courthouse grounds in the northeast corner, October 10, from noon to 1:00. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-saying sign. Motion carries. Good. Next up, anybody wishing to address this board, please come forward.
We'll go back to Gavilak.
Oh, yeah, we got, before we do that, we're going to, Matt, could you come back forward and see how those bids came out?
Just so, in case anybody in the audience is not familiar with the terminology here, this is to blacktop the road from where we, actually where we stopped three years ago, and moving forward into touching Town Limits there in Chesterton on Meridian Road.
Yep, or on Calumet Road.
On Calumet, I'm sorry.
Yes, yep. Yeah, so that'll be a blacktopping project, inch and a half, kind of an inlay project. So it's a mill and fill. Then we're doing another one on 475 West. That's from US 30 to 300 North over by the sand pit. Then we're doing two, what's called full-depth reclamation, and that's where we're grinding up the road, kind of recycling it, putting cement into it to stabilize it, and then putting an asphalt overlay. And that's a cost-saving measure that should save us 20 to 40% on projects. So this is the first time we're doing this through a community crossing project, and it's kind of a way to put another tool in our toolbox of cost-saving measures.
Is that both projects will be without materials?
The full-depth reclamation project will be from 250 West, from US 30 to Joliet Road.
Okay.
That area is really broken up.
Yes, it is.
And so it needs to be fully restored. And then 500 East, South County, that goes down to the Wheatfield Plant. That's a, kind of a collector-type road. That's from 1300 South to 1125 South. So, so, yeah, so those are the projects. It's a CCMG grant.
Right.
And so we received a grant for half a million dollars. And so we were expecting the bids. We estimated a little high so that we'd have the funds available. So, you know, the bids coming in at Reeve Riley at $749,475 is within our estimated project costs. And then Walsh &amp; Kelly came in at $815,521.50. And so we are recommending for contract award to Reeve Riley, and we actually have the contract here in their name. We have to get to N dot, this executed contract, on Monday next week. So that's why we're opening.
You got your blue pen, too?
I do, yes. And I, we have double-checked the bids. Just want to let you know that we have double-checked the numbers. The numbers all add up correctly, and we found that they're responsible and responsive bidders. So we're recommending Reeve Riley for award.
Throw it to the board for action.
They were the lowest bid, we're thinking.
They were the lowest bid, yes.
I love that.
Motion to approve.
By $60,000.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to award Reeve Riley the asphalt and paving jobs, a mill and overlay, and full-depth reclamation for Porter County Highway Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, anybody wishing to address this board?
I have one quick thing, Commissioner.
Yeah?
There was a question by some members of the Porter County Wildlife Board, whether or not the funds that they were holding at the time that they're in the process of turning that zona property over to the Parks Board, whether or not those funds would move over with them. I talked to Scott briefly. The fund is 4106. The amount is $14,877.07, and those funds will indeed move over with them. So.
Yep. What we thought.
Of course.
It's what we thought.
Right.
Got to ask the question, though, to get the answer.
That's true.
So, good. Well, with that, this board stands in recess.